We need to call the panel, council to order. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Here. Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Okay, first up, upcoming agenda items. There's no additional agenda items this evening. On our upcoming agenda, remind folks that next Monday, November 12th, the city is closed for Veterans Day holiday, so we'll be meeting on Tuesday, the 13th. And one item on that agenda that has moved around a good bit was last seen on November 19th, but is now on the 13th, is a work session on the Safe Grow Zone initiative. And I don't think that's going to move again. It's moved all it's going to move. Monday, the 19th, think of it as Finance Night. We're going to have a presentation of the Local Government Insurance Trust Training Grant Award. The Acting City Manager is going to distribute her report on the staff and the financial report. We're going to have presentations on the Fiscal Year 2012 CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and a presentation from the Actuary for the Police Pension Plan. And then the work session will have identification of budget-related questions and suggestions for council discussion in January. And that'll be a chance for the council to put anything out there that we want information on once we start the discussion in January. And the final item that night is going to be tentatively a discussion of proposed revisions to the landlord-tenant law. We're not scheduled to meet on Monday, November 26th, but we are meeting on Monday, December 3rd, and then we go on break for the holidays. So that's a little sense of upcoming meetings until we get toward the holidays. This evening, is Alex Flipsy here?
Yes.
Okay, good. I have a proclamation which is in honor of Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month, and maybe since you're here, I will read this, and then if you want to come up here, and I'll present it to you. "Whereas the health of our community's people is the foundation for a caring and productive society, and our future rests with our ability to adequately treat and ultimately find cures for individuals who are afflicted with a variety of illnesses, including pulmonary hypertension; and whereas pulmonary hypertension is a rare disorder causing intolerable blood pressure levels in the arteries between lungs and heart, and whereas in 2001 there were 3,000 pulmonary hypertension patients receiving treatment, in just five years, those numbers have grown to an estimated 30,000 patients. There are at least as many undiagnosed as diagnosed patients, and without treatment, pulmonary hypertension patients live an average of 2.8 years past diagnosis. With early diagnosis and effective treatment, the disorder can be managed for 20 years or more; whereas education can help with early diagnosis and funding for research and can help find a cure; and whereas the Pulmonary Hypertension Association is a nonprofit organization that seeks ways to prevent and cure pulmonary hypertension and to provide hope for the pulmonary hypertension communities through support, education, advocacy, and awareness. Now therefore I, Bruce R. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, to hereby proclaim November 2012 to be Pulmonary Hypertension Month, and urge all residents of Tacoma Park to recognize the seriousness of this disease and the meritorious work of the Pulmonary Hypertension Association to find a cure." So if you want to come up. Proclamation, and I want to thank you for making us all aware of this, making sure that we learn as much as we can, and bring awareness and change.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is Pulmonary Hypertension.
Good. Good.
Okay. Hi, thank you so much for this beautiful proclamation again this year. I was diagnosed with pulmonary hypertension 14 years ago, and at that time I was given two years to live. Actually, I was, when I was put on IV medication, I was told I had actually six months to live, if not put on that medication. If not for the Pulmonary Hypertension Association, I would know I wouldn't be here today. The president of the association, Maynoal Gagat, is right there. My sister Debbie Castro is the Director of Volunteer Services, and they have been working tirelessly to help find the cure, give support and awareness to the patients, the caregivers, and the doctors. We have, they, actually they have a Form 4 Early Diagnosis Campaigning that we're trying to do right now. Because it takes 2.8 years to be diagnosed, we also only have two years from the onset of symptoms before we really progress into the disease. And so it's very, very important to try to get more patients diagnosed at an earlier stage, rather than at where you're almost in bed all the time, like I was when I was diagnosed. And I really, really appreciate the proclamation and the awareness raising. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also just want to note for the record that I issued a proclamation offering condolences to the friends and family of Evelyn Louise Scott. She was a neighbor up on Carroll Avenue, and she was 35 years teaching in Prince George's County Public Schools, and she died in October. And I took the proclamation to her husband so that it could be shared with the family and friends at her service. Sure. Sorry. Reno, did you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay. So next we'll have public comment period, and this is for anybody who has anything to say on anything that is not on our agenda this evening, or on the consent agenda. So it would be if you have comments on items four and five on our agenda, if you can hold those till we get to those, we'll take your comments then. Comments on anything else, please go to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Burn Kelly. I live in Ward 3, Circle Avenue, 307 Circle Avenue. Jarrett, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for running. Thanks for being, doing this duty for our city. I have three things I want to talk about. There seems to be a theme, and the theme is autonomy. One is I'd like to hear a follow-up on the commercial parking spaces. Last time I was here was to talk about creating some favorable parking for vendors and commercial entities that are homegrown businesses within the city, near where these homegrown businesses operate, such as John's Lawnmower and the Greenfield Company, which I own. Secondly, you know, we've had the issue of having a resident to be our city manager, and I applaud that, but I really think we should look further at a hiring system for vendors and contractors, giving in a matrix-type of fashion, and awarding extra points if you're a resident. In other words, they give you a little leg up. Any revenues generated within the city to, and given to people who live in the city, come back into the city. And that's a known economic formula that creates prosperity within one's own grounds. And of course, we've had this love-hate relationship over the time with the county because of our police department and our library, and being reimbursed, as some of you know all too well, Seth being one of them, and Dan Robinson, and the rest of you that have been on the council forever, bruised. And, you know, that's a bit of a problem that I would like to see improved, and I'm for autonomy, but as Suzanne knows, and many of you know, I'm not for creating our own zoning code and that kind of thing. But as it turns out, we have a historic preservation for our beautiful historic parts of our town, and I support that. But we also are encumbered by another layer of historic preservation known as the county. And I'm not sure that the county really needs to be redundant or of service to us in that facet of regulatory process. For instance, I have a failed retaining wall, which I'm going to replace with the exact same kind of material and purge it on Willow Avenue, and I had the city engineer come and take a look at it, and he obviously, as I'm professional in structural matters, and he is, agreed that this is a failed retaining wall. But the Historic Commission has delayed my project for two months. I have now lost an employee because I did not have work, and have another employee has a brand-new baby, because they have to have their hearing. May I continue? They have to have their hearing for the sake of having their hearing. And here's the issue: this wall that I'm replacing is the same height, the same width, the same look, same finish as the walls on the street and as part of the wall she owns already. And it's actually leaning beyond the property line into the city and falling onto the sidewalk. There's cones out there now on Willow Avenue. And I have to wait until November 14th, when I started this process on September 25th, which makes me feel like we're hamstrung. I went to the city engineer, and I called Bruce, and they refer me back to the same people parking planning. Well, those people want their job security, they got to have their hearings and their numbers on the hearing, but we've got a perfectly reasonable Historic Commission here. And I think we should look for autonomy from the Historic Commission there. Thank you.
The first item that you brought up, the commercial parking, I've been looking for a place to put that on the agenda, and I'm hoping to do that soon. I haven't lost sight of it.
Thank you. Kay has informed me that there's been work done on it, so I'm eager to hear that. And thank you for doing that.
And just let me point out that we don't have our own Historic Commission.
Well, okay, we have, granted, we don't have an official regulatory body. We have some very astute historians here in this town, and they maintain historic Tacoma, and they're experts. And they don't even, nobody needs to be an expert for my issue. That's my point. We don't need that level of expertise and that level of government to replace a block retaining wall at Tacoma Park.
Thanks. Oh, and...
And speaking of, because these happen to have one, I didn't even know.
And Burn, if you stick around, I've got an update on tax duplication.
Well...
No, I don't either.
Oh, yes, you did.
That's what we like to do, guys.
Well, I'm glad I came tonight, actually. I'm Lorraine Pierceon, I'm Vice President of Historic Tacoma. And yes, we need a county Historic Preservation Commission. And yes, Burn, I will help you with your retaining wall, but September 25th to November 15th is really probably one of the fastest county processes you can find anywhere. And believe me, I've been through quite a few of them with our buildings, so, but I'm happy to help you. So just let me know, let me know what's going on. But honestly, they do actually move very quick compared to any other, any other branch of county government. I am here actually tonight after our, what I would say are very lively discussion, September 24th, to let the community know that Historic Tacoma and the city are working very closely together to produce a good 410 document that will protect the community and the city's ability to fight for its community in the future, in the event that 410 widening comes back again. And we firmly believe, we Historic Tacoma firmly believe, that yes, someday that will happen, and we are very grateful to, for the opportunity to work together constructively with the city. I want to mention that we met on October 31st with Acting City Manager Suzanne Ludlow, with Councilmember Grimes, with Mayor Williams, with Councilmember Mayo, with the city attorney, and with Historic Tacoma's attorney. And we are working hard to protect our community, and we're working together hard. And we will produce something that will do everything it needs to do in terms of maintenance and also protection. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your official peace delegate. And I want to tell you, I hope everybody turned your clocks back, turned your clocks back one hour the other night. Hope you guys did it. Otherwise, you're going to be in the wrong time zone. Next thing I want to do is tell you that remember November tomorrow, one day left before we vote. And I expect to see a lot of people out at the polls. I'm surprised to see a lot of people did some early voting, which is good. But I'm going to be out at the middle school tomorrow with the peace sign and everything, and I'll be taking my vote with me. And of course, you know who I'm voting for? Barack Obama. He says he seems to be the best of the choices. And I'd like to ask everybody out there to please come out and vote. People died for our right to vote. We can at least show them our respect for laying out their lives down on the line. Best way to show our respects and giving our condolences is to get out there and vote. No matter what the weather is, even if Hurricane Sandra made a U-turn, I'm still going out there to vote. Or die trying, I'll still be out there trying to vote. And I expect to see other people out there doing the same thing. Because, vote like your ass depends on it, because in this time, it sounds like it might. It's going to be a tie, they say, on the latest polls. But I don't go by the polls, I go by the people, because the polls have been wrong before. And I'm hoping they're wrong again. But I'm still going out there and cast my ballot. And I want to see everybody in Tacoma Park as possible, unless you've got some personal reasons, some illnesses, or some family crisis, you can't get out and vote. I think you should try to come out and vote, even if you have to take a day off from work to do it. Please, come out and vote. You say you want to make life easier for me all the time, people saying, what can I do to help you? Tomorrow is one thing you can do to help me out, help me on my work for peace, is to come out and vote. Just casting your ballot was a big step for a lot of people. And it's not too cold, like someone told me earlier, it's too cold to vote. It's not too cold to vote. I'll vote even if it's 20 degrees below zero. I'll vote. And my caregiver, my caregiver at home, who's working with me, Dana Smith, she's going to be having her mother bring her in tomorrow morning after she gets out there to vote at 7 o'clock in the morning, and then she's coming down to help me get ready at 8 o'clock. She's going to be out there helping me, too. And I expect everybody to please do your part as an American citizen. Please do your part. And thank you, Sue Ludlow, for getting that bone-breaker of a hump in the doorway you planned to be infixed. I'd like to see that fixed as much as possible and as soon as possible. Thank you very much. And remember, T minus one day and counting, 23 hours and 45 minutes from now, it's going to be too late. Don't join the too-late club. Come out and vote. Vote, 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 please!
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, my heart and good thoughts go out to everyone along the East Coast and inland who are beyond, who are beyond adversely affected by Sandy, the mega-storm, and our friend, the cold front. I think Garrett County just got their roads opened on Saturday, and as we all know, New Jersey and Staten Island, New York are not even close to being, being put back together again. I can't imagine what it must be like to have lost everything, and it brings tears to my eyes to hear the individual stories of heroism and loss. We were blessed because two or more degrees further south, and that would have put us right in the crosshairs of both storms. I also believe that every tree aiming for an electrical wire in our area had already done so by that last Friday before, last Friday evening in June, with the heavy help from the duratio. Huge gold stars to Acting City Manager Suzanne Ludlow and city staff for pre-planning and keeping us all well-informed on all of the changing plans as they occurred, and for keeping us safe. There was a plan for almost everything that could come our way, and the good news is we only needed to use a few of them. More and huger gold stars to the residents who seem prepared for everything. I think two weeks ago I said something about people getting passionate about emergency preparedness, and I think they got as passionate as one can. I noticed there was a lack of water in every store and no D-cell batteries, so it seems everybody began to get prepared. Sheltering in place may be the new buzz phrase. And more important, always remember, if Jim Cantori of the Weather Channel is covering a weather event in our area, pay very close attention, because those storm crosshairs are not very far behind him. He's always at the center of whatever's going on. There are also all kinds of gold star honorable mention over the past two weeks. Honorable mention to Now and Then for letting everybody tie one on right in the store with a fabulous variety of scarves. A great moment to meet and greet. To the great and wonderful friends of the Tacoma Park Library, Tacoma Park, Maryland Library, for having another fabulous book sale. The proceeds go to some of the very special programs that are unique to Tacoma Park. To the Recreation Department for having another fabulous Halloween parade and party, not to mention the Tacoma Park Community Band entertaining as the parade began. There must have been 400 Halloween revelers who were so cute and scary at the same time. Super job of bringing our special community together. To the Old Tacoma Business Association for keeping our love affair with food trucks on the front burner, and also for so many of other fun and innovative programs that they are really, they're really putting Tacoma Park on the map. My goal is on the weather maps all over the Washington metropolitan area is to see Tacoma Park, not just Silver Spring and College Park, but Tacoma Park. A special shout-out to the Public Works Department for sending out the annual leaf collection and expanded recycling program. If you, you all should have gotten this in the mail today, very important document. It tells you everything you ever wanted to know about when the leaf collections are taking place and what is new and special to the recycling program. So don't recycle your light-green cardboard flyer. Also, you should have gotten your November newsletter, can't let this go without speaking about it, another precious piece of information. It is my social calendar. If you do nothing else with it, open it to the back page, and below the fold is the entire, I guess, everything that's going on at Tacoma Park during the month of November. And, oh, I'm not quite done yet. It's the first Tuesday in November 2012. Tomorrow is the first Tuesday in November 2012. If you haven't voted yet, and I am underlining everything that Pat said, and you're a registered voter, and I hope most of you are, go out and vote tomorrow. It's not just a presidential election for us, there are also many important and controversial questions that need to be answered and voted for or against. So it's the moment when the people have a chance to really speak how they feel about something. So tomorrow is Election Day 2012. We'll all be anxiously sitting by our TVs or radios or whatever, trying to listen to how it all turned out tomorrow, I guess almost about this time, maybe a little bit later. So make sure that you go and vote. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I want to draw the attention to my neighbors in, where I live, in New Hampshire Gardens in Ward 6. I learned, as we know, that because there were sidewalks built, new sidewalks installed in the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood this spring and summer, over a period of three or four months, that this is going to be followed up by the planting of replacement trees along the, where they had to be removed for the sidewalk work. And so those new trees, I found out, are going to be installed November 8th and November 9th, which is just, really just a few days from now. And I don't know exactly what time of the day or where it's going to start, or exactly how many trees are going to be, or what kind of trees, or whether there'll be parking restrictions. I haven't had a chance to find any of that information out from the Department of Public Works, but at least know that that's going to be happening and try to prepare for it. I also wanted to take just a minute with regard to the election tomorrow to comment on question B on the ballot, which concerns Montgomery County exclusively. Question B is, if you read it as it's written in the ballot stuff that you may have gotten at home, it's hard to understand. And it's hard to understand what the issue is and whether, how to vote. I'm going to support, I'm going to vote yes for question B. What it is, is that it will amend the county charter, charter, not ours. It's nothing to do with the city of Tacoma Park. With regard to the rights that the chief of police has with regard to making management directives, to be able to hand down management directives, and what it will do will eliminate what's called effects bargaining. And effects bargaining, I have come to find out, is a rule under which for the last several decades, the police department in Montgomery County has had the right to intercede on any directive issued by the county police chief with regard to the question of what will its effect be on the police officers who serve that. The county council has known for many years that effects bargaining has made it really difficult for the chief of police to actually run the department, because these directives, which are pretty normal kind of stuff, routine, day-to-day stuff, get held up for weeks, if not sometimes many months on end, while the union makes its decision. The county council and the police department want to remove this. It does not affect the police union's ability to negotiate the normal stuff like wages and hours and basic benefits that affect any police department. Council President Berliner told us a few weeks ago that this was unanimous, this question B has unanimous support of the Montgomery County Council. And I think it's the right thing to support, although of course, the local police union in Montgomery County opposes this change. So I'm not telling anybody how to vote, I'm just simply saying that this is how I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote to affirm this decision. That means to vote yes on question B. And in any case, regardless of your position on this, I encourage people to vote tomorrow. Obviously, this is a very important election. The third thing I want to mention is that I wanted to tell a brief story here at the risk of wasting people's time, is that I've known Buddy Daniels, K. Daniels, Cohen's brothers for, I guess, seven or eight years. We served on a committee together for four years, and I thought I knew Buddy pretty well, and I thought Buddy knew me pretty well. But last, two weeks ago, when we last convened, I was having a conversation during the, during the break, and talking to Buddy, and it, I won't bore you with the conversation and what it was about, but we were talking about national politics and our support for President Obama and all that. But Buddy was being really cautious in the way he spoke to me about all this, and I was beginning to wonder why. Finally, the truth came out, and Buddy said, "Well, I thought you were a Republican." And I said, "You did?" And he said, "Well, yeah." And I said, "Well, how come?" And he says, "Well, you know, you always sort of dress like a Republican." And I love Buddy. I mean, how can you not? I mean, here's a guy who just says what he thinks, and...
He's like the NASCAR cat.
So I, this really struck, struck me. I thought, "Oh, my gosh, I mean, I'm just as liberal as anybody in this city, and I, you know, I'm a card-carrying liberal Democrat, and I, and it's just, it just sort of shivered my timbers to think, somebody could think that I'm, there's nothing wrong with Republicans, just as long as they leave town every day before sundown." So I decided that I guess I shouldn't dress that way anymore, which is to wear a coat and tie and a nice clean dress shirt. And so I decided today to, you know, wear a sort of a Perry Como sweater. If you don't know who Perry Como is, that's all right. A plaid shirt, and I've also got my ponytail.
I know!
So I just want everybody to know from now on that, you know, who I really am, deep down inside. And... And I don't want there to be any mistake about it. And now that I've got that off my chest, I will be quiet and let the business of this council proceed.
I particularly like the ponytail. Councilmember Siemens.
I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that. I just, two quick things to say. One is, is everyone else, I'm encouraging people to go out and vote tomorrow, and if anyone in Ward Four needs a ride, they can call me at 301-565-0190, and we'll arrange to get you to the polls so you can vote. And the other thing, I just wanted to note the irony that I see that later tonight on the consent agenda, we're going to be approving an extension of the food truck program. And I think back a couple of years ago that the council sat here and, and heard how horrible food trucks were and what they were a blight on our community and, and a drain on our legitimate, end quote, businesses. So times changed. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick comments for the city manager. There's a bio retention area that's being done in Manor Circle. It's been unplanted for, I think, four months now. It'd be great to get something in there besides bare dirt. And I had a request from a neighbor in the area to have the city plant something, to create a community garden in that spot. So I just wanted to pass along that information, or at least I think their other suggestion was putting winter weed in before winter. The other issue, I know you had asked for a follow-up from the council on the, on whether there were a couple of council members who are willing to volunteer to review this, if you wanted help on the sustainability proposals. And I'm offering myself up and looking for any opposition or support from council members on that, if anybody else wants to weigh in and, and wade through them as well. Great. But I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Thank you.
And I've got a couple of comments. First, one quick follow-up to Councilmember Schultz's discussion of question B. Many of the questions that have been referred for this effects bargaining have already been through the regular bargaining process, and then they were referred to effects bargaining. So it's a second bite at the apple. Many, if not most, of the proposals that are still awaiting decision have been with the union since 2008 and 2009. So it's not just a matter of weeks or months, it's, can be up to six years. And it's for things like, should officers have to read their email? I just wanted to report, oh, also, one follow-up on what Councilmember Siemens said. I know that the recreation bus is going to be providing transportation to the polls tomorrow between 9:00 and 3:00 from Victory Tower and from the Franklin, and so that's another source of rides to the polls.
And I appreciate that.
Councilmember Grimes and Acting City Manager Ludlow and I attended the Government Operations Committee in Rockville today, the committee of the county council, and they were discussing the tax duplication issue, which has been ongoing now for, as I pointed out to them when they were talking about whether they'd been working on it three years or five years or six years, I said, "I'm about to enter year 20 working on this issue." Today's discussion was to provide direction from the GO committee to the County Office of Legislative Oversight, or OLO, and provide them some direction on what they should be looking at as they look at this issue and provide feedback to the county council. The OLO person there said that he thought that they were going to be working on it through the winter, and he was hoping to have their report back to the committee for the next go-around on this late winter or early spring. The discussion centered around a couple of questions that they had asked. The direction that the committee provided to OLO was to look at two things, and I'm going to refer to my notes, so I get them right. The main thing was to look at allowing the county to charge a lower property tax rate within a municipality. So this would be the tax offset where, rather than tax duplication payments, the county would lower the tax rate for municipal taxpayers to the county, and then the city would have to raise tax rates in order to offset that. They also asked them to look at allowing municipal services to qualify for reimbursement in situations where both the county and the municipality provide the otherwise reimbursable service within the municipality, and that's for places like Rockville where they provide police services, and so does the county, and how does that work? It was a very...
And that can also apply to our recreation activities and housing activities.
Right. So it was an interesting discussion. It got a little frustrating at times. There was a certain tendency for some county council members to buy into the argument that county, county taxpayers in unincorporated areas are in fact subsidizing municipal taxpayers. There was a lot of remarking by the county council members about, "Well, gee, you mean the municipalities are taking the 17% of the income tax that they get and using that to fund these services that they're trying to get tax duplication payments for?" There was some misunderstanding, there was, there were questions. And so I think it ended up being a fairly good outcome, given where it could have gone during a number of points in the discussion. The direction to the OLO for their investigation into this issue was to look at pretty much as many things as they needed to, to get the correct information. Everybody agreed that this all has to be based on good data, and so they were directed to, as part of their work, look at the task force report that was five years in the making. And we requested a number of other things for them to look at to make sure that they understand this. We think we have the best understanding of the issue and have certain ideas about where the outcome will go. I think probably some folks at the county have different ideas about the best way for it to go and hope that it will come out supportive of their position. But this issue will continue, and my assumption is that because of the timeframe, we won't have any resolution of tax duplication issues for the, our upcoming budget discussions or the county upcoming budget discussions. So we will be, again, relying on the county executive for the amount that he puts in the FY, what will it be, 14 budget for tax duplication payments to municipalities. So that will be upcoming, and we will need to stay on top of that. A couple of other things. I attended a meeting, I guess now about two weeks ago in Rockville, that Council President Berliner had. A number of interesting topics came up. That was a breakfast meeting, and it was with the municipalities in his district, in his, his 20% of the county, which has an awful lot of municipalities, most of the other ones that are inside the Beltway. And there were some interesting discussions about the zoning rewrite and how that will affect inside the Beltway communities. And I'm talking with some folks in some of the Chevy Chases and elsewhere about maybe getting together and having some people from over there get together with people over here and talk about issues that might be of common interest. And I'll keep people updated on that. Also want to comment on the Boy Scouts Troop 33 having their annual pancake supper. I'm surprised that Councilmember, Councilmember Daniels Cohen was there as well, others may have been, but she and I overlapped for a bit of the time, so I'll give a gold star to the Boy Scout Troop 33 for their pancake supper.
That's great.
A lot of people there, I understand. Last year was the record-breaking crowd, this year was a little bit behind last year's attendance. Also wanted to let folks know that Councilmember Siemens and I are going to be meeting Wednesday night with the president of the Ritchie Citizens Association so that we can move forward on trying to resolve some issues that I know a number of people have with the turn restrictions and see if we can get things worked out to everybody's satisfaction before the intended resolution of that issue when signs get removed in the spring when the traffic coming goes in. Also, we're continuing to work on fine-tuning redistricting, and we'll continue to have some discussions so that we can bring that forward, hopefully for a public hearing in January. A reminder to my colleagues that the Maryland Municipal League-McGarry Chapter Meeting will be here in Tacoma Park, a week from Thursday on November 15th. So it's always much easier to attend when it's here in Tacoma Park, and hope to see everybody there. And that's all I've got.
What can we do to help? Can we do anything?
Show up.
Just be there?
Yes.
Okay, that's scary.
We will now move to the city manager's comments.
Thank you. I've got two items. I sent an email out to you on two items that I'd like to just talk about briefly in public. The first has to do with local legislation and by-county legislation that's coming up before the Montgomery County and the joint Montgomery County, Prince George's County delegations over the next month or so. On Monday, December 3rd, in Rockville, local legislation will have a public hearing in Rockville. And on Wednesday, December 5th, by-county legislation will have a public hearing. And I've put at your place is a list of the Montgomery County delegation list of, of bills. I've gone through these bills, and in terms of items that I think we probably should have a comment on, based on the comments made previously by the council members, I would think that supporting the very last two items on the page, MCPG 11413 and 11513, which have to do with reporting and notifying the public and municipalities if there are sewage leaks by WSSC, reporting by WSSC about sewage leaks. This is something that makes a lot of sense in terms of our notice to the public. I think it fits right in with previous direction that's been given by the council, so a resolution is not needed on that for us to provide testimony. I do know that there are else, there are other places in the state where the same kinds of concerns are desired, and there's been some interesting problems in Baltimore with, with similar problems of not notifying on sewage leaks. So it may be that although we testify on this, it also ends up, it may morph into a statewide bill later in the session. I did go through the, the other bills that are here. Just want to kind of give you a heads up on a couple of them. One is MC 213, which has to do with a safety zone for archery hunting. Currently, hunting in Maryland in general cannot be done within 150 yards of a dwelling or other place occupied by people. And the proposal, except for two counties, there is a proposal that Montgomery County be one of the exceptions and lower that safety zone to 50 yards. I've asked the police chief if he thought that this would be something that would affect us. We don't, it's, that kind of hunting is prohibited in park and planning parks, which is an area where we are more likely to have some space. So I don't think it would be, be something that would affect within the limits of the city of Tacoma Park, but I did check that out. The, there's a few items that people may just kind of like. The idea of refillable beer containers is an option for getting beer at, from a, a place that's eligible to sell beer. I did check on the instant ticket lottery machines gaming. This is MC 513. This would allow veterans organizations to have instant ticket lottery machines that would be from the state. I guess this is in many places, but not in Montgomery County. The city may wish to take a position, if you would, that that would be something that a resolution would be required. The, there are a number of Board of Education items. There is a proposal by delegate Charlie Barclay to increase the size of the school board in Montgomery County from seven members to nine members. And have the, instead of just, instead of voting for any of the district reps, to only vote for the rep that's for that district that you live in. There's also a proposal to increase the compensation to the school board members. It's relatively a modest amount. And there is a proposal to allow the student member of the school board to vote on every single kind of thing other than a personnel problem. So they could vote on items including the budget and the collective bargaining related items for the school board. The, the other thing that you may have some interest in is MCPG 10213, which would remove the provision for the park and planning commissioners that there had a restriction of the number of this, from the same political party. So that, right now, you can't have more than three members from the same political party, and this would remove that restriction. If somebody has any other questions or wants some direction, something that, or wants me to come back on a previous, on a subsequent night to have a resolution on some of these items or to bring back information, I'm happy to do so. I would ask for your support to just go ahead and prepare testimony on the last two items about the sewage leaks.
I, I think preparing testimony on the last two makes sense. I'd also like to know a little bit more about MC 3, which is the farmer's markets, winery, special events permits.
On, on that one, it looks like it's, it's changing something that says you can have 12 to changing it so that it's no more than one per week, but still the same number. So it didn't look like it's something that would be substantively affect us, but I, I'll do some more investigation on that to make sure.
Okay. And I'd like a little bit more information on the instant lottery machines in veterans organizations. I'd like to consider whether we want to have something to say about that. And my first reaction to the increasing membership on the Board of Ed from seven to nine, but only voting for one of them, is gee, I would be tempted to want to oppose that because I think it's good that we vote for all of them. So I'd like a little bit more, and we can check with colleagues and see whether that's of interest.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Councilmember Mail.
Seconding all those comments by the mayor and adding to that, that I would also lean towards supporting, having not read it yet, but the student voting.
And Councilmember Siemens?
Yes, thank you. I was just curious, you said that the hunting restrictions would be maybe on park and planning land?
It, it already is. It is restricted now. You can't do hunting on park and planning land.
Okay, how about city land?
On city land...
Do we have a restriction on that?
I don't think we have any restrictions, although I think we're in this general area, we're not permitted. That was my understanding, but I, I can double check.
I saw, I saw Bambi's dad this morning down at Public Works, and he looked like an eight-point buck.
But was, was it, was it more than 50 yards from any house?
It probably is at some point in his, in his...
Travels.
In his travels, yeah, because we have Ed Wilhelm Field and the valley there. It's quite a ways from homes.
I think under current law, as well as under this proposal, you have to have the permission of the landowner.
That's right.
So in addition to being more than 50 yards from the, from a house, you have to be, you have to have permission, so no one's asking for permission.
Presumably, the school district wouldn't allow it, and we certainly wouldn't.
And I think I saw Bambi's dad at 201 Lincoln about two weeks ago.
He roams.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, when you, you said they were going to lower it to 50 yards, I wrote, "Yikes." I mean, 150 for archery is, especially if you're using a crossbow, is, is not, is pretty short, and 50 yards is awesomely short.
No, that's very, I think it's very scary. Personally, I don't think it's a smart move for Montgomery County to do that, but I, I look for things that seem that they would affect Tacoma Park or not.
Right. I, yeah.
And, and it would also be good if we're going to have any testimony on the local bills, that's on Monday, the 3rd, and we have a meeting on Monday, the 3rd, so we would need to figure out how we would do that.
Right. The two ways that we can provide testimony is we can simply submit it in writing, we can have somebody go... We can have somebody go from here. We may also be able, if it's something that we feel strongly about, to get Michelle to come in and speak on our behalf, to provide testimony. So there's several different options.
And on occasion for these hearings, thinking back to unification, but on, when the delegation has a meeting like this on the night that the council meets, on occasion, the council has gone to Rockville, testified, and come back and had our meeting.
And that's...
So there's, there's all kinds of options there depending on what we want to do. If we're, if we've got positions on three or four of these that happen on a Monday night, it might be good to all go on a little field trip.
And I certainly am willing to encourage people to, if somebody wants to go for the Wednesday night one, for the by-county bills, happy to help, you know, arrange for that.
Is that what I had already said I could do?
No, you're doing a different thing.
Okay.
Let me just mention that briefly. On, actually, a week from Wednesday, on November 14th, the joint priorities hearing is to be held. And this is a time when we will have testimony that says what our interests are on, on all kinds of state matters. So I'll be routing things around by email to come up with that list of items.
I'd be happy to participate in that hearing on the, particularly on the latter two bills. As the city manager knows, there was a sewage leak on Old Carroll Avenue, which necessitated the city's stopping or suspending its paving program that was pointed out by a resident. So I've been talking to delegate Hucker about these issues since then. The intent of one of the two proposals, the public notice piece, is to make sure that after there's a sewage leak, that very easy to understand information is displayed in, you know, some downstream locations from where the sewage is entering some water body so that, and to provide links for ways for the public to get more information. So a number at WSSC to call or other information as a way to just keep pressure on WSSC to fix those sewage leaks quickly. So I'd, I'd be happy to jump in, and I've been continuing conversations with his office since then.
Good. Okay, so I will come back on a couple of these and double, send some information by email so I know what to bring back, I think would work the best. The other thing I want to mention is that we would like to do some potential overhiring for the police department. Jesse was able to find a 2002 ordinance that actually wasn't in our books, for whatever reason, but had been passed, that talks about how we do overhiring, if it's needed, to, to start a process to do the training of police officers, to get them on this, to get them trained to be on the streets so we don't have too many vacancies. The, the ordinance does talk about keeping it within the police budget to be able to do that. I do not know if what I am proposing would be within the budget, because we're looking at some of the issues on timing. I think it will be, but I'm not certain. We're being very careful about this. We're likely to have two vacancies, both of which could take place relatively soon, so that if we had someone entering the Montgomery County Academy, Police Academy in January, it would happen after these two officers are no longer officers. But I'm not exactly sure, we're still going through some of the legal steps related to that. So there may be a couple months overlap. Those officers who would be in the academy would not be out on the street yet, but they would be supported by cadet payments while they're at the academy. I believe we will have enough money within the budget for that short overage, but if there's something that would look like it would be a little bit more, I would bring that back to you to ask for authority to, to spend a little bit more money and then have a budget amendment that would address that. But I would like to get the process started. If we are able to get some names before December 1st, then they can be part of the January academy. There are some other ways that we can get officers, through the Prince George's County Academy and through lateral moves from other organizations. But the one through the Montgomery County Academy works, seems to work the best for us, so we would like to try to proceed that way if we can.
And it's, it's been, my experience that the, as you say, putting them through the Montgomery County Academy is the, is the preferred way. We get the best results going that way. Do we still have an effect the authority to overhire from 41 to 42?
We have, I'm, I'm...
There's no limit on...
There's not a limit on that.
But I, but I remember that we, that there was a, that we were sworn strength of 41, and there was a, there was a time where it was like it was okay to go to 42.
Right. It was in 2008.
The 42nd was funded through state or some other gang funding, was it? The 42nd was not funded by the city, is my recollection.
I'll have to double check on, on that specifically. I was looking at it, but I did not have enough time to, to finally get all the history of the timing on that. I saw some of it, but I don't completely understand it.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I certainly support this. I was supportive of the overhiring the last time for the same reasons, that it's important to get the officers into the academy and be prepared to fill the openings on the street as quickly as possible. So I thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes?
I also support the overhiring. I do have one comment, which it's easy to quote someone who's not here to confirm or refute it. I believe that Chief Recucci made a remark, maybe within a couple of months before he left, that he disfavored the Prince George's Academy, that he much preferred the police officers that we got through. I'm not making any comment about anyone who's currently on the force for ongoing training. He preferred the candidates who came through the Montgomery County Academy. So obviously, you'll look into that with Chief Goldberg.
Right. There are, there's a shorter period of time that the Prince George's County Academy has, but sometimes there's some wonderful officers that come through there. So we are evaluating that, and partly, it's a person-by-person evaluation.
Makes sense.
But we would prefer to, if we identified somebody in advance, to put them through the Montgomery County Academy.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to offer my support for this, but I do want to make sure that if there is any budget overruns, that we are notified as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
What is the duration of the Montgomery Training Academy for somebody to get in and come out?
Six months.
Six months.
Right. And then, then they start the full training within, on Tacoma Park, and that's another, like, 15 months before they're on their own. So, I mean, it takes a long time.
Wow. But, I mean, I, I see the obvious need to, to do what, what you're suggesting here and support it, but it just seems that that's a, a long-term process during which time you could have other officers resign or leave for whatever reason. But I guess there is no other, no better remedy that I can think of.
I think, I think normally, we work pretty well with, with the way we've got it. We just happen to be in a, in a place where a number of officers are injured right now.
Yeah. So I understand, and I do appreciate your explaining all that to us in those, the email that you sent us.
So it sounds like there's support from the council to go ahead and keep exploring this and see what you can do.
Thank you very much.
And that's all your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and we don't have any minutes to adopt, so we're now ready to move to special session. And, my pen stopped working.
Just remember, which is...
The twin, yes. We have a consent agenda with six items on it, and I don't think anybody has requested to pull any of the items. So would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it. Second?
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. We have a single reading ordinance on the consent agenda, so we'll need a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We will now move to our agenda item number two, which is a first-trading ordinance establishing a permit parking area in New Hampshire Gardens. Councilmember Schultz, do you have things that you want to say? Do you want to move it? How do you want to take this?
Yeah, I do have something that I want to, to say about this. The, the, let me pull it.
Don't get the ponytail caught in the microphone.
We have a draft ordinance in front of us that will implement, if passed by the city council, a permit parking area that covers certain designated blocks in the lower part of New Hampshire Gardens. It also happens to be in the, in the block that, where I happen to live. So I have kind of two, two hats to wear with regard to this, so to speak. There's, there's strong support from this, from the community association, and I urge the adoption of it as, as written. Staff has proposed a, an amendment to the, has suggested in the blue copy, a change in the whereas and an additional section, the two that would exempt from the parking permit zone, a stretch of New Hampshire Avenue in front of the, of the Zion's Lutheran Evangelical Church. And I have said to staff that I do not want to see that, that amendment to occur, although I do appreciate staff's conscientious approach to this, but I don't want there to be any mistake about that. But it, it needs to be emphasized that this parking restriction is specifically designed not to interfere with the Zion's Lutheran Church or the other church that would be adjacent to this parking, parking permit zone, the Bright Light Baptist Church, so that even though it's a seven-day-a-week restriction, it only covers the hours from 7:00 PM at night till 7:00 AM in the morning. So in those circumstances, it should rarely, if ever, conflict with any normal religious functions that would go on in a church, such as, you know, the normal services, weddings and funerals and baptisms and, and that sort of thing. Because we, absolutely positively, the community does not want to infringe on, on the proper functioning of the church. The purpose for the evening hours is because, for several reasons, but with regard to the Zion Church, is that the church has been renting out its hall for a number of years to any group willing to pay the rent for parties that start extremely late at night. And we drew up the parking permit zone, the adjacency of the blocks affected and the hours affected, to, primarily to help try to stem this problem, which has created enormous blight of noise and disruption and personal conflict, which I won't go into again here, in, in the adjacent areas. And the residents who brought this proposed permit parking area to my attention and to the city's attention remain adamant that they do not want to see this, this, this exception. The, the, in other words, the curb parking in front of the church, which amounts to 15 spaces, would certainly be there seven days a week, 365 days a year, for the normal functioning of, of, of the church. And, and we think that that's the most important thing. So with that, I would like to move the ordinance as drafted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second in council discussion. Any comments on the, Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
I thought, when, when the people came two weeks ago to testify about this, there were some folks that wanted to extend it up Kingwood. Am I, am I correct?
You're correct.
How difficult is it be, would it be to include that, that, that block in a future, at a future time?
Oh, at a future time, it would not be difficult. The, the residents of that particular block, or say it's more than one block...
Right.
Would simply have to do what the, the other residents have already done, is, is to petition the city to amend the zone, to extend it.
The council initiated it.
Well, it, I understand, though, that it's not a council-initiated process.
The council could initiate the process.
I don't, I don't know that that's the case.
It's a matter of right now.
Yeah. But one way or the other, it could be done, and, and what I would like to see us do is to observe how this works.
How it works.
And to see if indeed it does need to be extended. Because if it does, then I will encourage the residents and even help lead them in that effort to, to get their, their stretch of Kingwood included.
Okay, yeah, because I, it, it looks to me like it's going to drive any, pun intended, any parking that was closer to New Hampshire back into Kingwood and into Lancaster and into Haverford. Even though they're several blocks away, it's still, it's going to push, push all the, all those folks that were parking up closer back a little bit farther in the neighborhood.
It, it may, but it may not.
It may not also, correct. Okay.
Does the...
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the staff's recommendation. One of the things that staff had some concern about was that in the code and in the implementing ordinance, nonprofit organizations, including churches, are eligible to get these visitor passes, but there's not, it's not designated how many, and it seems to indicate that it could be a relatively good number, kind of depending on the judgment of the staff person working on it. It didn't seem much direction to staff. And one of the things that we were thinking about was that the church could presumably get a number of these passes and then have their people park anywhere within the parking area, which would seem to counteract the, one of the major concerns of the residents. Also, I do have some concerns about kind of church, church activities that happen in the evening, because there are such things. So our recommendation was to basically have the parking area exclude the church so that the spaces that are on the New Hampshire Avenue access road would not have any restrictions that, as part of this process. People, the area in front of the residential homes would have the residential, would have the restrictions. And one of the, you know, possibilities is that if they, if those residences did have some extra people besides the ones that they had permit parking for, that they could actually park in front of the church. But I think that my major concern was this idea that there could be relatively, it's somewhat unclear as to how many spaces the church could get, parking passes that they could get, and then they could park with, anywhere within the district. To me, that seemed like it kind of undercut the purpose of the parking zone.
It would just seem like that's a, in many ways, a separate issue, because even if we were to amend this to include, to have the ability to park in those 15 spaces in front of the church, they could still get the passes for other areas. Right?
If, if the church is omitted from the parking, from this permit parking zone, they could not get the passes to park.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Schultz?
I don't know whether the church is omitted or included, it's just that that particular stretch of the public right-of-way is what's being affected. And so I'm not sure how you would say that. I mean, I would point out that the church already has its own parking lot, which seems to have about 19 line spaces, although the lines are faint. But I've noticed that they put parking in there pretty liberally, so that they probably get 25 or to 30 cars parked in there. Plus, they park up on the sidewalks as well as... Plus, they park up on the sidewalks, as well as around the trees and on the grass areas as well. This would not actually eliminate the church's ability to have parties at late at night, because there's an abundance of parking directly across the street of New Hampshire Avenue, where the International House of Pancakes is, the Quality Inn, the Connoisseur Lodge, which, of course, is parking that belongs to that, but there's no tow-away zone in that area. There's parking on Holden Lane, on the commercials on the east side of New Hampshire Avenue, as well as the Aldi's. So what it'll do is it'll just simply force the partygoers to park on the other side of New Hampshire Avenue in a non-residential area, as opposed on the west side of New Hampshire, which is purely residential, with the exception of the church. And I'll also add is that the church is aware of this ordinance, and they were made aware of the community meeting. They have not participated in the meeting, community meeting. They haven't made any comments to me or made any comments in writing to the city council on this thing. So my sense is that they're perhaps not too terribly concerned about this restriction, since, from a church point of view, purely the functions that a church would normally have, any church, aren't particularly going to be affected by this restriction. I mean, you know, if they had a concern, we would have, could have heard it, and we could have considered it, but we haven't heard a concern from the church.
Councilmember?
Let me just add, if it should turn out that once this is set up, that the church recognizes that it does create problems for them, that I don't appreciate, then I'd, you know, be certainly happy to entertain amending the parking permit zone at a certain time in the future.
Councilmember Grimes?
I'm curious about the provision in city language, which, in city code, which says "Nonprofit entities located and address within a designated residential parking permit parking area may be issued parking permits." It uses the word "may," it doesn't use the word "shall" or anything like that. Do you have discretion to deny an application?
I don't know that we would have discretion to deny it. The kind of... I didn't bring them with me, but the kind of implementing...
The regulations.
Regulations that we use basically give some language that it's up to the staff as to kind of the right number to give to one of these entities. And we don't usually have things written like that, so it kind of took me by surprise. I don't think we've had any history on that, so I have a precedent about how we routinely do that. I don't know that it would be something that we would feel comfortable just saying no to none, you know, to not give any parking pass.
It sounds like if we go forward with this as written, there's good possibility that we'll be revisiting it, potentially for Kingwood, potentially for something surrounding church parking there, or some other thing. So it seems like what we've got is something that we can start with, and we'll just have to revisit if we have to revisit. Any other comments? Any public comments on this first reading ordinance, establishing a residential permit parking area? Okay. Then we have the ordinance moved and seconded. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously at first reading. Next item is item three, which is a first reading ordinance adjusting salary and compensation of the mayor and council members effective for the next council term beginning a year from now. Would somebody like to move the ordinance? Would somebody like to move the ordinance with any potential changes? You want to move it, get it on the table, and discuss it? I have the sense that there's going to be some potential changes, so...
I'd be happy to move the ordinance with an amendment. Would that be appropriate?
Why don't you move it, we'll second, put it on the table, and then you propose the amendment.
Okay.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Mail. And Councilmember Schultz, you have an amendment.
I want to propose an amendment that would delete the provision to provide a... What is it?
It's on the fourth side.
Page four. The last of the text, that's really on page four, starting with "City's Health Insurance Program," all the way down to the three asterisks. Basically, what this ordinance does, so our listeners are aware, it proposes that the, starting with the next elected city council, city council members would have the privilege to participate in the employee's health plan, whereby the city would pay 50% of the then premium for that health plan, and going forward for as long as that city council member or members were enrolled in it, the difference being made up by the city council member. And secondly, to provide for all those who otherwise have health insurance on their own and don't need to participate in the city's health plan, to put money into the same premium amount, same amount as the insurance premium, in a deferred compensation plan. I'd like to amend the ordinance to delete the aspect of the ordinance that deals with a deferred compensation plan, and leave in the part of the ordinance that allows a city council member to participate with the 50% of the base premium.
Okay.
That would be the sentence, starting "if the mayor or any council member on page four." Delete that sentence.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
I second it.
Council discussion. Councilmember Grimes, did you want to discuss it?
Yes. I note that the 2007 Council Compensation Committee and the 2011 Council Compensation Committee both identified access to health care as a potential means of attracting council members who might otherwise feel unable for financial reasons to serve the city as a council member. And given that view, which is plausible to me, I support extending access to city health care with the 50% payment for individual, not for family, for a council member, and I would not be availing myself of this opportunity. And I'm comfortable with it, although it does represent a somewhat substantial payment by the city to a council member who does take up the city on this offer. The fiscal note on here said approximately at the current rate, it was 30... Someone have the number? Thirty-five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and 40 cents annually at the current rates. I think we can afford that, and I think that it's plausible, once again, that we would be able to attract additional council candidates with access to health care. But they did say access, they didn't say general subsidy, therefore I support Councilmember Schultz's amendment.
Councilmember Mail?
Thanks, a question and a comment. With regard to the opportunity to buy into the city's health care or health insurance program at a 50% rate, am I correct in my understanding that it's currently a 75% rate? That we currently have the ability to buy in? Or do we not have the ability at all to buy in?
We can get in but pay employee... The council member pays 100%.
100%, okay, thank you. So we can get in now in this question of taking away some of the cost barrier? And then, this is just a comment, that's not going to reflect, be reflected in an amendment proposal, but, you know, another set of people who we, who are discouraged from being on council are young parents who have no childcare options. And so, at a future time, considering something like being able to be reimbursed for babysitting costs for people serving on council would be something else that would potentially open the door to greater participation by more residents in council. Thank you.
And I'll just... I hadn't thought of this this way, but I'll just say, in response to that, that this will not result in an amendment either, but one could also put forward that it can be tough for people who are sole proprietors of owning their own business, that it can be really tough to do city council work. And so if we wanted to attract people who are sole proprietors, we could provide a subsidy for them as well, but I don't think...
We already have several on council.
I know, so I don't think we want to go there, and it gets into kind of picking ways in which we can kind of do, dare I say, social engineering. And it was just a reaction to some of the things put forth. Councilmember Smith, did you have something?
I would like to say I do support the amendment. I don't think that we should add more money to our compensation as of this time. I think it makes sense that if we do open up some benefits for council members that do want to receive those benefits, I think that's a good thing for future councils. If we can increase the opportunity for more people that may have not have decided to serve on council or run for council, I think that's a great thing.
And I'll just add that I think the extra piece on here that evolved into the deferred comp piece originated when I said, well, I thought it was reasonable to have the ability to have equal compensation for equal work, and that if we were going to provide something to somebody, that there needed to be kind of a menu of benefits so that people had the opportunity to get equal compensation. And I still feel that way. I feel like it's a fairness issue. I don't, you know, I can understand some level of discomfort with where we've ended up on the deferred comp. I think it may have been the best way to try and come up with an equitable treatment, because if we go forward with this amendment, we will end up having some council members who effectively get a 35% raise and other ones who don't. And it just doesn't seem right that there not be equal pay for equal work. Councilmember Schultz?
That has, is really the essence, I think, of what's created so much thought and contemplation about this issue, is what the mayor just said, this question of fairness. But I came to the conclusion personally that if another, other members of the council are able to have health insurance at a more affordable rate, that that... It doesn't diminish my situation. My situation, for what it's worth, is that we have adequate health insurance, and expect to continue to have that. And so this is not something that I personally need. And so it really doesn't represent any skin off my nose if somebody else who would be able to benefit from this can benefit at relatively minimal cost to the city. And so nothing's being taken away from me, because another council member happens to be able to take advantage of a fringe benefit. If it did subtract something from me, that would be a different story. And still, it's there for me. If for some reason, and hypothetically, I were to lose my health insurance, then I know that I would be able to make, in the future, if I'm reelected, would have the opportunity to take advantage of this. But otherwise, I just... Getting this deferred compensation at the current salary level that we're at of $10,000, as the mayor's pointed out, is an effect of 36% salary boost. Obviously, we don't get the money right away. You'd get it at some point in time when I retire for the second time, in addition to the pension that we're already supposed to be getting from the state of Maryland that we pay into. And I just don't see the justification for that kind of a financial remuneration coming to council members.
Any other council comments on the amendment? Any public comments on the amendment? Seeing none, maybe we need to vote on the amendment, and then we can go on and discuss the ordinance's amendment. If it gets amended, so all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
Okay, five to two, the amendment passes. Now we're to the amended ordinance. Does anybody have any comments on the amended ordinance? Councilmember Grimes?
My comment is prompted by the amended ordinance, but it's not actually on it. My comment is that there, this has been said about other stuff that's come before the council in the last month or two, that there seems to be some misinformation floating around the community, and also a lot of anger associated with this, with the idea that the council should set its own pay increases, that seemingly, to some people, there hasn't been any objective view taking into account, I'm quoting from email traffic, into account what people get in other jurisdictions, no rational approach to what council members get paid. And that upsets me, that there is this anger directed at the council, in part because of the ordinance that we have in front of us, where the council would give itself a raise. And I find that disappointing, and also unrealistic, and just not cognizant of how governments work in the real world. And so that's an observation, not about the amended ordinance, but about the reaction to it. I support the ordinance, so let me continue. I support the ordinance as amended, as pretty much hewing to the directives, not the directives, the recommendations of the Council Compensation Committee, which was appointed by the city council in accordance with the city charter. And there was ample opportunity for public comment, including in a public hearing. I believe that we have carried out the process faithfully and in accordance with legal and fair means.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just comment, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of the automatic raise, and I guess I would have rather seen it, I would have rather seen language added for the city manager to track that rate, that employment cost index rate of inflation, and thereby allow the council had future opportunities to adjust their salary associated with that potential increase, as opposed to just putting the increase in automatically. That's it for my comment.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Grimes. I was really surprised and taken back by some of the comments from residents, and actually shocked by some of the comments from residents, because this was a committee that, by city charter ordinance, of residents that brought all this up. So I'm, it actually, the blowback from it was very surprising. I, you know, I'm in favor of whatever is here, so I don't, where was I going to go? I was going to go someplace. I just, I mean, you know, I'm in favor of some kind of compensation, and isn't, doesn't the federal government give themselves raises on a...
They vote on it.
Yeah, they vote on their own raises. I'm back to chopped liver. Why are we chopped liver? I mean, we're an elected body of folks in a municipality, so I just, you know, it's not like a big, it's not like a whole lot of money either. Cola.
If I can just make a comment... If I can just make a comment or two. The, the difficulty in the past has been that councils tended not to come back and revisit council compensation for long periods of time. I don't remember, I don't want to characterize the, the gaps between when people thought it needed to be addressed, but they tended to be long numbers of years. And I've been part of a couple of discussions of raises in future council salaries with varying results. And I think it's, it's good to revisit that and, and look and see whether things are, need to be changed. But I always felt during those discussions that it would be good to have some kind of mechanism, that there would be a way for small incremental bits over time, rather than waiting until it seems like, well, gee, it's been 10 or 20 years since we addressed this and it's so minor and we need to make an adjustment. And then you end up making a big adjustment. I think the small ones probably address the issue. I guess my concern at this point is wanting to understand how we would see future councils revisiting this issue, whether we want to make sure that the, that we set forth that there should be the expectation that councils would revisit, have a committee to look at it, see whether this is working, come back with recommendations. Have we been doing it, that they're supposed to do it every four years? Is that the current? So, that if, do we need, if, is the expectation that we would continue so that there would be another committee after this action in four years to look at it, revisit it, see whether this is working, see whether this is reasonable, and whether they have recommendations at that point? And another question I have is with the, with the rate of change pegged to the, the index that the city uses for other employees, and it, it could be that we do it as automatic every year in the future and revisit it. It could be that that's tracked and that at the end of a council, you know, at the, at the, toward the end of a, of a council term, the council could look at it, say, it is these. And, you know, it would mean that for the next council, it would be a raise of X based on this, and therefore, that's a good thing to do, go forward with it. So that there are a number of ways to address it so that it isn't necessarily as automatic as it just happens every year, odd infinitum into the future.
City Code 204.110, periodic review of council compensation, does say that the city shall appoint, the council shall appoint a committee of city residents every four years, beginning with the calendar year 2007. We're not changing city code here, so there will be a committee appointed in 2015.
And that's in Section 2 of the ordinance.
Okay. So, so that it is something where this is not just setting, you know, setting the train running down the track and it just runs and nobody looks at it. We, we continue to have citizen input and see where it goes, whether this works better than, gee, let's wait X number of years and then somebody says, let's bring it up and talk about it. Councilmember Schultz.
I concur with what the mayor's just said. I think that this is, there's, there's different ways of skinning this cat. I think the way it's been done in the past of periodically, the city council sort of saying, well, time that we, you know, propose a, a raise, that's one way. I think what we've come up with is a way here that can also work. I support it. I'd just remind our audience that at the current rate of this index increasing, at I think it would, it's a 1% a year roughly, give or take, is that for our salary, that would amount to $100 in our annual salary. Hardly a threat to the budget of the city, and it's hardly going to materially affect the, the welfare of any of our council members. It's not a lot, but I, it's, it's a token amount, I guess you could say. And I think that's reasonable and fair. You know, if we happen to go through a period of inflation where, you know, the index increases by a couple or two, 3%, then wow, we would, might even get as much as $200 or $300 raise. Still, on a base of $10,000 as it is in 2012, that's not a horrific amount of money.
And, and it's probably a good thing to not use the, refer to inflation, since it's not based on inflation. It's based on a labor index for the cost of government.
That's correct.
Councilmember May.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I guess I'd like to propose an amendment that we strike Section 1 up to 204 dot 105, and that the only, the two remaining pieces in the ordinance are the Section 2, which is about the next review, and then the health benefit. I just don't see the benefit of the one, of bothering with the $100 a year.
I'm waiting to hear if there's a second.
I'll second that for further discussion. I, if I may start that discussion by saying I'm actually fairly indifferent here, whether it's a percentage increase every year or two, or it's a lump increase, or it's no increase, I'm indifferent.
Any other comments? Councilmember Smith.
In lieu of striking the 1% increase, would there be any increase, Councilmember Mayo?
No.
Okay.
Any other council comments? There's an amendment on the floor, any public comment on the amendment on the floor? Okay. I'll just double check again, make sure if there's any council comment.
I'm trying to be clear on the amendment. Councilmember Mayo, could you describe it again, please? As far as the, the specific lines in the...
Right. So, I would not make changes to, to dot 04 dot 100, salary of mayor and council members, just leave that.
Just take one. Leave that as is.
Leave all the, take all the underlined language out?
Yes. All the underlying language would go out.
And, and return all of the strikeout language?
And I would, I'm just trying to look at the strikeout language. So, so A would read, the mayor shall receive an annual salary of $13,000 through the date on which the mayor elected in November 2013 is sworn in. Or I guess it would just do it an annual salary of $13,000, period. Right? And then each, on B, each council member shall receive an annual salary of $10,000, period.
Right. So, it would return, it would return the underli, it would return, no, it would, it would keep out all of the strikeout and all of the underlined.
Correct.
This amendment. And leave just the untouched language in Section 1.
Correct.
Councilmember Grimes.
Given that, we would also want to eliminate on the second page, the fourth and fifth whereas clauses, which track with the changes that you suggested deleting.
Right.
And the last clause on that page looks like as well.
Councilmember Schultz.
Am I to understand, then, that we would be approving an ordinance that gives us no raise and no indexing of salary?
Yes. Gives future council, the future councils.
Well, yes, that goes without saying. This is nothing to do with the current council.
Right. I just want to make sure we're clear.
The raise would be in the form of the health benefit we're providing.
Only?
Correct.
Oh, okay. No, I don't support that amendment. I think, I think what the committee that we appointed recommended is, is what I want to support.
Any other council comments? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
I think that's two in favor, five against. Okay. That amendment fails. We're back to the original motion with the First Amendment, which struck the most of Section 2.
And kind of following up on Councilmember Grimes' mention, we'd also take out the whereas clause that referred to the deferred compensation item.
Right. Which can all be cleaned up for second reading. Any further council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor of the ordinance with the First Amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. That's a six to one vote on first reading. And we will take a short break and come back for our remaining items. And we have two remaining items on our agenda this evening. Agenda item number four is a second reading Charter Amendment Resolution amending Article 7 of the Tacoma Park Charter. This is the item that we took up two weeks ago at our last meeting. And we made some changes to what was being proposed, and the language that we have in front of us should reflect all of those changes. Maybe if, maybe if the city attorney just wants to run through those changes. I don't know if she's listening.
I'm listening, but I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I'm still catching up here.
Oh, yes. She's gonna be a sec.
Yeah, go ahead.
The acting city manager who's disappeared called to our attention just a moment ago that on page three of six in the yellow highlighted section, that on the second line, and all other employees who-
Excuse me, I don't have yellow highlighting, so.
You look at the one with the orange front.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
The orange-fronted one. On the, yeah. All other employees who report directly to the city manager would include the executive assistant, which is not the intent here, so the suggestion is to change that to all other, I'm sorry, all other managerial employees who report directly to the city manager.
If I could make a friendly suggestion, I think probably let's use the word unclassified, because that has a charter meaning.
Certainly.
Do we need to move this before we go any further?
We were just getting clarification here, but yes.
I would like to move it.
Second.
With the change that Ms. Silver just recommended.
Unclassified goes right there. It's in 702B.
And where exactly does the unclassified go?
It would read executive employee, it's the definition. Executive employees include the deputy city manager, city clerk, treasurer, city department heads, and all unclassified employees who directly, report directly to the city manager.
I'm sorry, who would that be?
The executive assistant Peggy Washington.
She's an unclassified?
She reports, no, she reports directly to the, to the city manager, and, but she is not an executive employee.
No, my question was, who, who is an unclassified employee that is not a department head? The clerk, the treasurer, or the deputy city manager?
One, one would be the human resources director.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded with that change. Are there council comments? Councilmember Grimes, is that an old light?
Yes, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
Which is that I remain opposed to this charter amendment. I don't think that the, given a charter amendment, I don't think it was given the time, time and discussion necessary and further. That was, that is an opinion that is reflected in what I've been hearing from city residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I would say the same thing that Councilmember Grimes just said. Given the, to, to support this amendment to the charter would defy in the face of an overwhelming opinion from residents of this city in opposition to this proposed charter amendment. That some have at least said that let's slow down this process and give it more time for discussion and debate, not rush through it. But that's as, that's as, the number who've spoken in favor of this charter amendment are very, very few. And so I, I just don't really see how, you know, all arguments about the value of residency aside, one way or the other, I, there's just simply, the fact that residents in such enormous proportion of a majority oppose this thing means that I really can't support it. And that would sustain, in the case of my own ward, where I've only had one person in the entire ward speak in favor of it, and everybody else who I've talked to has spoken against it, which is a considerable number.
Councilmember Mayo.
I really appreciate the work that was done by council with input from residents at our last meeting, and with the help of the city attorney, to draft language that gave us opportunities to provide input during the hiring process for the executive unclassified assistant, positions we just, we just were talking about. I think these are important changes that give us a chance, as elected officials, to play some role, previously no role, to play some role in, in decisions that affect the people who had to lead our city government for five, 10, 20 years. So this is a great change, and I really appreciate that we were able to also listen to many residents who were concerned about creating an inflexible residency requirement in charter, that we found a way to use the charter not to create that inflexible residency requirement, but to use the charter to allow such a residency requirement to be created in code. So again, great examples, I think, of the council being responsive to the feedback we were getting from many constituents. I received after last week's meeting, in the wee hours, as well as the following days, a number of emails from community leaders praising the work we had done, and praising the progress we had made in, in, in adjusting the original proposals, which is something we've been doing all along. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I want to, I failed to make myself as clear as I wanted to make. Thank you. Let me get this on. Thank you, I failed to make myself as clear as I should have. I do think that the council has spent a terrific amount of time and used a lot of creative energy to come together, and I'm very proud of what the council has been able to do on this subject matter. I do, and would be, the, the, one of the issues here is that this charter amendment that we're looking at has two components to it. One is the residency, deals with residency, and one deals with the council's role with regard to hiring of executive staff, for lack of a better term. And I have no trouble with the proposal for doing that with regard to the council, the charter stipulating, or an ordinance stipulating, that the city manager should invite the city council members to participate in the process of defining the qualifications and to be involved as that hiring process goes along, although but at arm's length. But unfortunately, both of these are wrapped into the same ordinance, and it's, and most of the position that I've heard and read, with all the emails that we've gotten, which are distributed to all of us here, are imposed to the residency requirement, or the charter that would allow the city council to have a charter, to have a residency requirement. And so therefore, I oppose the whole thing.
And I guess I'll weigh in and say that I've always been opposed to the idea of a residency requirement. I appreciated the compromise solution that this body came up with two weeks ago, and I think that having the residency requirement be something, even though I don't want it at all, having it be something that is done by code rather than by charter amendment is a better thing because it's more easily done away with if it's implemented and it proves to be a hindrance, which I think it will be. I feel that having gone through all of this, even though I am inalterably opposed to a residency requirement for the city manager or any of the other city employees, that voting for this charter change will bring in the good language on the advice part of the advice and consent question. And I think having the ability to easily undo a residency requirement is better in code than in charter. And given that there is a majority of the council that wants to have the residency requirement, I think it's better to have it where it can more easily be undone. So I will be voting in favor of this charter amendment, but I will be voting against the enabling ordinance that we will be taking up as the last, last item on our agenda. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to take a minute to thank my colleagues on the council for working together in a very collegial way to address this. I think, you know, we had great differences in the beginning. There was a lot of motion involved at some points, but I think, I think the council showed a great deal of maturity and professionalism in the way that we handle this, and I would just like to thank you all. I think that what we've come up with is, is not necessarily what I wanted in the beginning, but I certainly heard a lot from city residents, and I think that, that we have addressed most of the concerns that I heard about, and have received thank you notes from some of those very same people for the, the compromise and the, the ordinance that we're about to, to vote on, the resolution we're about to vote on. And I would just say that I still strongly favor the residency requirement for the city manager, and I'm, I've been kind of shocked through this whole process that it's been received with such emotion, because it is, it's recommended by the International City Manager Association, and that, that city managers do live in the jurisdiction that they work in, and it has also been not unusual across the country for cities and municipalities of all sizes. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd also like to thank the council for everyone's input and, and ability to get beyond all of our differences in a, in a very, I don't want to say gentlemanly way, I'm not sure what word to use there, because there's a woman here, too. So, you know, I, I really do indeed appreciate it. I, too, was really struck by the passion from, from the, from the residents on the issue. Those that were against it were vehemently, vehemently, I underline, double underline, against it, to the point where I talked to a lot of people who were for it. They didn't put it in writing over an email for fear of, of some, some verbal retaliation. So that, that really, it really surprised me. I, I'm also in favor of a, of a residency requirement for the city manager. I agree with Councilmember Siemens. The cities all over the country, no matter what size, have residency requirements for their city managers, and I'm, I'm looking for the waiver. I don't see the waiver anywhere, when we get to it, someone's gonna have to show it to me. I want to make sure it's in there, because I don't want to make someone who lives a block outside of the city move. That's not what I'm in favor of. I'm, I'm in favor of someone really, really grasping the essence of Tacoma Park, and, and someone who lives close by probably has had that, has already had that ability. And also anybody who's moving up in the, within the, within the city hierarchy of, of employment also has grasped that heart and the, and the essence of our city. I think it's a very special place, so I'm, you know, I'm really glad we were, we were able to reach a compromise that, that we can go forward with. It was actually a pretty exciting bit of legislation, I thought, so, but I get excited over simple things. Ice cubes melting and things like that.
Councilmember Smith.
I have a question here, Mr. Mayor. Is there a reason why we can't break out these two proposals? The charter amendments, rather than it just being one, they're two separate ones? One for the buys and one for the residency?
I'll look to the acting city manager and the city attorney.
I don't think there's any difficulty in voting for them separately, and in that sense, dividing up the, them as two different amendments.
Okay. I would support that.
And if we were to do that, how would we do that?
I assume you would vote on perhaps different sections separately, and-
But this is second reading, wouldn't that kind of muck things up?
We could entertain amendments that would delete the first and then delete the second, and that would have the same effect, wouldn't it?
Yes, I think so.
What would be the benefit of doing so?
Councilmember Smith, I would just carry a second.
Well, I'm trying to give Councilmember Schultz an opportunity.
To vote yes?
Exactly.
You know, I, I think it's nice, generous of you. I think, I haven't heard that, that Councilmember Schultz has any difficulty in voting no, though.
I would like to give him an opportunity.
He did vote yes two weeks ago.
I will vote no proudly, so I have no difficulty voting no. I did say what I said, and if it got divi-
I did say what I said, and if it got divided into two, that would allow me to vote yes on the advise thing. But I have a feeling this is going to pass anyway, so regardless of how Schultz votes.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to just respond to the question of where the waiver is, and it does, you found it afterward, okay. For the community, it's section 705. The residency section says that the council by ordinance not only may establish the terms for a residency requirement or residency preference for the city manager, but also may provide for a waiver from any residency requirement.
Thank you. There it is. There you are.
And I'll just say that, I'll provide a little bit more comment on my decision to vote yes on this resolution at second reading. I'm, you know, I could convince myself easily to vote no, but I felt like there was a lot of good work and a lot of compromise that happened two weeks ago on getting to a better place that eliminated what in my mind was some of the worst ideas that were originally put forth. And I felt like to acknowledge that work and to get toward compromise, it was better than not to dig in my heels and say just no to something where it wasn't completely what I wanted, but it had a lot of what I felt was very helpful and valuable. And so I want to continue that and try and make it so that I can say, and I have the opportunity to say no in the next agenda item to what is left that I still object to. So I feel like I can say yes to this one and no to that one, and in that way honor the work that we did two weeks ago in coming to the compromise. Is there any public comment? Mr. Lovelace in the back, and then anybody else who wants to make comments can come to the podium.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, your official P D delegate. Yeah, I'd like to tell you people, I still strongly believe that we do need a residency requirement on our city managers because if they're coming safe from Greenbelt or Gathersburg or something, it'd be just another eight-hour job to them. They'd be saying, well, I'm just working here eight hours, it's not my city, why worry about it? As if they were living in our city, they're going to take a lot more concern for what they treat our city and what they do for our city, the quality of their work. So I think there should be a residency requirement, you know, and also I think there should be a waiver, you know, because you don't want to say somebody who lives on our border or real close to our border cannot be a resident, cannot be a city manager because that's almost the same as living in our city because they pass through our city and work there every day. And they, and they know people, you know, within its borders, and they come in contact with our city every day. And I think, you know, that'd be okay. But I strongly think we should have some form of residency requirement, you know, to get, to make sure we get a better quality of work done because they'd be taking their work home with them, so to speak, because their work would be their home. And they're more likely to do an honest and high-quality job than somebody who, say, lives over in Greenbelt or Gathersburg or wherever, other, Gettysburg or wherever they come from than, than living within that border. Because to them, like I said a minute ago, it'll be just another eight-hour job, you just close the office door and via, I'll tell you Monday. It's not like that if they live here because their city is there concerned, they will have their city at heart because that will be their home. I think they, since home is where the heart is, they're going to treat it much better. And I think that's why we need a residency requirement, but with a waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. Bruce Moyer, 6907 West Moreland Avenue. I serve as the president of the Westmoreland Area Community Organization as well, and am here on behalf of WACO this evening. Two weeks ago at your last discussion of this matter during the public hearing component, Tom Forehand spoke on behalf of WACO at that time and expressed the association's opposition to the charter amendment. I am here this evening to restate the association's opposition to this compromise amendment that is before you this evening. I'd like to speak to two fundamental reasons that were part of the association's original thinking that still reside in the language that is here before you tonight. Before speaking to those two aspects, let me say first of all that all the residents with whom I have spoken have the highest regard and praise for your service to the council and to this city, to your effort to try to do the best you can, and to your contributions of time and talent. At the same time, there is a real concern about the manner in which you've approached this and the substance that you're considering this evening in two respects. One, it flies in the face of any kind of common sense notion of if it ain't broke, don't fix it. In other words, what's, what's the problem here? What has so generated angst on the part of the council to require this kind of action that can deprive the city ultimately of the best talent that it can hire to serve the needs of the city and its citizens? It's remarkably inconsistent with the notion of the council reaching out to problems and solving them. Instead, the council here is creating a solution in search of a problem. The second is how remarkably politically counterintuitive your actions are. And I say that in the sense of the pride that so many folks have in this city about this being a small d democratic sense of place and one in which small d democratic politics have resided throughout the thirty-some years I've lived in this city and, and much prior to that time. While on its face, a residency requirement may be considered to be a populist intuitive notion, at the same time, the council has been overwhelmingly unpopulist in your actions in not hearing, as councilmember Schultz pointed out earlier, the overwhelming public sentiment that is against the underlying two components that you've merged together tonight in a chameleon-like fashion in order to either trigger a political compromise or perhaps dilute the substantive components of what you've crafted. To the extent that there is surprise at citizens reacting at the way they have, goes to the heart of the fact that so many citizens in Tacoma Park work for government at various levels, who know public administration, who recognize that this is a strong city manager, weak mayor, form of government that we have in Tacoma Park. And for the city council to attempt to get its hands around machinery and the apparatus of a publicly administered, professionally administered approach towards government corrupts the very essence of that. And secondly, for you to have any surprise about the kind of reaction upon the part of some members of the public, for you to at the same time talk about raising your salaries at a time when there's considerable scrutiny and question about the wisdom that you've approached the first matter with, only all the more creates confusion and concern about how you approach the salary matter. So I suggest you not be surprised that there would be that kind of reaction. While at the same time, personally, I believe that there should be an automatic mechanism for providing for salary adjustments, the timing of raising this matter on the heels of the former issue certainly does not behoove your interests or certainly the city's interests. Getting back to the core issue, though. WACO, the Westmoreland Area Community Organization, stands opposed to the matter before the proposed amendment that you have before you this evening. The sentiments of citizens with whom I've talked throughout the neighborhood are inalterably opposed to a residency requirement and ask you to refrain from adopting the amendment before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Troy Jacobs, Flower Avenue in Ward Five. And I want to take this opportunity to reiterate what was issued to the council as a written statement a couple of weeks ago, and that is my opposition to the residency requirement. I do believe that there's some good work that's gone into this, and I am a firm believer that there needs to be communication between city council and city manager and the staff. But the skepticism that was articulated in my statement still stands, and I have particular concerns about the limiting effect of the residency requirement as well as the causal mechanism between establishing a residency requirement and our goals and objectives. One of the things that I may have missed, and I apologize if that's the case, but it is a little bit puzzling to me that in the discussion of incentives and waivers, that there's, I have not heard the fiscal impact of those activities, although it would, I would imagine that there, there is. And maybe it's, it's speaking to the fact that we've sort of gone through this too quickly, and we need to actually pause and think through some of these pieces more carefully. I am concerned that, as articulated by the last speaker, that what, it's a little bit like Rube Goldberg, you know, who created the machines where you have a simple task and you've actually made it much more complicated. And do we really need that? Or do we actually just need the best candidate for Tacoma Park to do the job? And I would say that the latter is what I really need, as well as others, I think. And I'll leave it at that, but it would be good if someone could speak to the fiscal impact because on both this agenda item and the next one, there's nothing listed as having a fiscal impact.
I think at this point with the, with both this one and the next one, that there's no fiscal impact because there's no, there's no proposal, no, you know, nothing that you could come up with a fiscal impact on, given that there's, there's no particulars, particularly on this one, since it's just enabling a potential code change. Any other public comments? Okay. Any other council comments before we vote on the charter change resolution? Councilmember Smith.
So are we going to separate these proposals, or are we going to put that to a vote, or how are we proceeding?
My recommendation, if, if you want to separate them, would be to...
Make an amendment?
My, my recommendation would be to table them this evening, draft the separation, and bring that back next week.
Okay.
If that's something that you want to propose.
All right, I make that proposal to table them this evening, and we'll come back next week.
Is there a second to table?
I would second it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to table the second reading of the charter amendment to next week with, with the idea that it be separated into two different resolutions.
That's correct.
Comment from the city attorney on the advisability of that? Rube?
Without being able to do research while I'm sitting here, I think that should work. I'm not saying it's, I'm not taking a position on whether it's a good idea or not, but I think it is legally sufficient to divide it up that way and to, to table it so that two different charter amendments can be drafted for your consideration.
Any additional council comments? And my, my assumption in, in doing that is that moving it one week would then make it so that anything that gets approved would be effective January 1 rather than December 25th, that kind of that fifty-day, all of that time period that goes with charter amendments.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo.
I'd like to ask a question of councilmember Schultz, which is that having just moments ago indicated that you had no problem voting no on these things together, I'm curious as to why you would now propose separating them out and using up another week's agenda on these issues.
All right, I'll respond. Because I think that the idea of the putting into the charter if necessary or just passing an ordinance stating that the city manager is obligated to involve the city council in the hiring of executive officials in the city is, is a good one. It's not asking for consent, which I would oppose, and it would forestall a situation where we've, where we would have a city manager who guards his or her privilege of hiring and saying this is none of the city council's business. And it would open up the possibility where we can say, we understand that the city manager under charter has the exclusive right and responsibility within his or her powers to select the candidate, but that we simply are asking that that city manager keep the city council members informed of the process and that the city council would, would play a role in outlining its desired qualifications at the initiation of the, of the process. I think that makes imminent sense, and I can support that. But I am inalterably opposed to the residency requirement, and my feeling is, is that once that gets into the charter, then the ordinance will be approved and we'll have, we'll have a residency requirement for the, for the city manager and other officers, which I oppose. So the easiest way to stop that from happening is to vote against the residency thing, or the residency aspect of the charter amendment.
And just to follow up with a question?
Please.
I believe that, using the words of, of one of our public speakers, that the great, the only, the source of corruption of the weak mayor, strong manager form of government is the very language you just indicated support for. Because residency is not a, is not an issue with regard to, or at least it has not been for the majority of, of strong manager forms of government that have a residency requirement, that it's the issue of the council having a role even through advice. And so I'm just making sure that, unless I'm misunderstanding, that that's the issue that has, has so outraged the community, but you're indicating your support for that.
I think the city council can have a role in saying, in stating that when we recruit for, say, a department head, that, say, for a Department of Public Works or the police chief, that we would like to advise the city manager on the kind of qualifications that should be advertised. I mean, effectively, that's what we're doing right now with the... I mean, effectively, that's what we're doing right now with the, by creating a community selection committee for the incoming city manager. And I think that's fine. In fact, I don't even think we need a charter amendment to do that. We can just simply make sure that the new city manager, whoever he or she might be, knows and understands from the time he or she's hired that the city council expects that person to make the city council aware of the progress of hiring. But we, but nevertheless, I think putting it in the charter is not, is pretty, is not a bad thing. I'm happy to support that. I just, but I do feel strongly against the residency. By being them both in the same, same action here, I feel strongly enough about the residency thing that unfortunately I just would oppose this thing as currently proposed. Does that make sense? Did I clarify your thing on that?
Councilmember Smith?
That's, I'm sorry. It's a late.
Okay. Any further council discussion? Okay. Then we are at a vote to table. All those in favor of the vote to table until next week for the purpose of dividing the resolution into two resolutions, please say aye.
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 Is that, let's do hands. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are you voting?
No.
That's a 3-3 tie.
All right. I oppose tabling.
Okay. Okay. So, the amendment fails. Tabling amendment fails. So, we're now back to the amended, no. Sorry, that was the last, that was the last one.
That was the last one.
The second reading of the charter amendment resolution. So, at this point, it needs to be a roll call vote on this resolution. Quick, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels calling?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
No.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Of state.
Then I'll call for a revote, since I'm in the majority. I think I can do that, correct? Looking to the clerk, the acting city manager, or the city attorney. Somebody in the majority can call for a revote.
I'm not sure you carried Robert's rules of... Irma didn't bring it down, so...
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I think it's the equivalent of a reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
You can...
Move to reconsider because that vote was...
4 to 2 to 1.
4 to 2 to 1. So, would you please recall the vote?
Mayor Williams?
No.
Councilmember Daniels calling?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
No.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Of state.
Okay. So, now that's a 3-3. Therefore, it does not carry. I believe that's correct. I just want to make sure I'm doing this correctly. Okay. Well, then, the next agenda item is not something that we can take up because we don't, we don't have the authority to do that.
Right.
I'm looking at Robert's rules. Just looking at Robert's rules.
Yeah. Double check that.
It appears that you're in order here.
Okay.
The motion to reconsider may be made only by a member voting on the prevailing side in the original vote.
Right. Yeah. That's the piece I recall. Okay?
And what about a tie vote? I...
Well, a tie vote doesn't, it needs a majority of those voting in three, a tie is not a Therefore, we're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it! Don't forget to vote tomorrow.